Yeah, once it was cool.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I think it's cool. Oh, yeah, because there was. You know. I was going to. That's how I look. Suit I've worn before.
Oh, there you go. Dirk, you're here. Everyone is your crew.
Really spread. Like last time I was this.
Right.
A year ago, last November. Actually, I keep it running.
Why is your dream during the years?
I'm more casual. I used to wear casual. I go like fashion. You don't have.
I'm not all of my heart.
Yeah.
Hello, congratulations. Well.
Oh, wait.
Who are you? How are you? I was just telling you. Then you were right. I have a big smile. I'm very happy. I think it's like your story. Plus.
Yeah. Well, that's. But it's. What they. Can't be. Can be.
Oh, she didn't operate on her. They should. She was like her. Yeah, it was literally okay. I was like. She was having some. Years in. And then she caught along. There. You. So. But was it? I was back. I remember today.
We.
Yes. Although it's something. Really.
Hey, you know.
You're kind of business.
Did. She usually had. She usually has. Agenda up. And. And I don't see it. No. I don't think so. Yeah, unless it's. Here it is. Okay, I think she just has that up. Did she tell you to have that up during the meeting?
Yes, because I was trying to get the stream up and running, so I didn't do that one yet. But I will. Just don't. Don't cut anything.
First, we're gonna go.
Are there any?
When?
You wanna talk? You got a six. Won't you?
Paula, Paula, let's go. Go on, guys, together. Two seconds, people, this thing.
I'll figure out how they roll. Mira, andele.
I know.
Chee, valla.
Lamanos.
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 Just gonna do something by yourself. Well, I mean.
She was good too. Hello there.
Hi. Nah, 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 nah. Frank, did you tell them those like? Get off the couch.
A minute to go.
That was so nice.
Bark about.
Yeah.
You're ready to go. Sleeps next.
Hundred percent.
Hardness.
I apologize. We, uh, we had really good turkey and dressing back there.
You're gonna be tired. Sleepy. Who are you sleeping with, leaving the show? Hi. Lost track of time.
Lisa. Uh, good evening. Can I please have everyone's attention? It is six P M. Yes. On Wednesday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and this is a duly filed and posted regular meeting of the Alamo Heights Board of Trustees. Thank y'all for coming. I'd like to welcome anyone listening to our live streaming broadcast. If anyone would like a recording of this meeting, we will post a link on the district website within twenty-four hours after the end of this meeting. In addition, we will also post the materials being presented within twenty-four hours, so you can review a copy of those as well. The recording. The recordings are under the school board icon at our Alamo Heights Independent School District dot net. Kind of lied there. A H I S D dot net website. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board tonight, we welcome your input during our citizens to be heard item on the agenda. Please fill out the yellow form by the door, right over there. And read the instructions and indicate the agenda item if there is one, so we can introduce you at the appropriate time. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to my fan favorite, Dr. Elful.
Thank you. Mr. Page, welcome, everybody. I love seeing such a great turnout. I love seeing the student journalists here. Those are the ones. They've got the bright flashes, and so it's all very professional. Thank y'all for being here. And thanks for being here to support everyone during the recognitions. Uh, I want to remind you that it's a great time to celebrate everybody. So if you're here for a particular person, please stay till the end of all the recognitions, and I'll let you know when that's done. And because then we have the regular board meeting after that, which you're welcome to stay to listen to all of our business, but we also are live streaming, so you can go home and listen to it at home if you want. But I'll let you know when that time is. Our first recognition tonight is, uh, the spotlight on excellence, which goes to Alamo Heights High School's Nadia Trubias. Come on down. Always got to give. You stand right there. Hold it.
Popper up to there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Every month, we shine the spotlight, uh, on an employee who works behind the scenes often, uh, to fuel our tradition of excellence. And, uh, this month, we shined it on Nadia, who is the principal secretary at Alamo Heights High School. Now, Nadia actually, um, was with us for three years prior, came back about a year ago, last January, to become the principals, to be this principal secretary. And of course, she does a great job. I mean, the high school is a very complex place. The high school office is even more complex. And so Nadia is, does a myriad of roles there, and she always does it with a smile, with very professional kindness for all, which, uh, we all come to expect from Nadia and all of our staff. Now, one thing that she, because has gone over and above, was this year at the high school, in a very, uh, busy time, we were down one, uh, secretary. Uh, and it was actually secretary who works with the academic dean, Charlotte, who's here. Uh, when there's a lot of stuff going on in that department. But Nadia stepped up and for like over a month was really doing her job and another job. And so we did it with a smile and never complained about the work. And so I think that really goes over and above and beyond. And so we'd like to recognize you for that. Congratulations. We've got a number of staff, and we know some family well wishes. Wave at us if you're here supporting Nadia. Yeah, wave at us. There. Nadia, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. Thank you. I really appreciate this. I always work extra hard to do what matters where I'm needed. I don't ever expect anything in exchange, but I really do appreciate this.
Appreciate you. Next, I'd like to call up here to stand next to me, uh, our powering powering the profile video, uh, from Howard Early Childhood Center, Kathy Marcias. Come on down. This is for you. Every other month or so, at least six times a year, we create a video spotlighting one of the employees who exemplifies our Alamo Heights Profile of a Learner, which is the knowledge, skills, and attributes that we're trying to instill in our students. Well, the best, one of the best ways to do that for our students is to model ourselves. And so Kathy's being highlighted this month for, uh, a healthy sense of self, is that one part of our profile. So you see the video, you'll see that we have these little banners that explain kind of what part of the profile that she's exemplifying. And what's really exciting is she hasn't seen the video yet.
Really?
And so as soon as we hit play.
And I'm spreading.
You can go stand there and watch it up there, and I think we have it queued up. Are you ready?
We are ready to go. Are you ready, Kathy?
Let's enjoy.
Let's go.
Kathy, the Howard Early Childhood Center, by empowering the profile of the learner by helping children develop a healthy sense of self.
Perfect. Anybody? Way to go.
A lot of the facets of my job is moving kids towards their best sense of health, right? Physical sense of health. But even more important, or equally as important, is a healthy sense of self, where a child knows they're cared for, loved, they feel secure, and then they're able to take risks. They're gonna try, they're gonna fail, they'll succeed, they'll have positive relationships with children, like their peers and adults. And it's so important because it's a huge, um, aspect of a child's like social and emotional wellbeing. It's really rewarding to see a child be fearful in the beginning, to then progress to waltzing into the clinic and saying, hey, Nurse Kathy, um, my head is hurting, or, hey, Nurse Kathy, I lost my tooth, or I need help in the bathroom, whatever it is, having an accident, all those things. There's so many things that happen at Howard, but yes, so it is very intentional in the beginning, and then you see that progress of them coming along and, um, accepting you and then seeking you out for help.
The very first thing that comes to mind is loving relationships. She has such a loving relationships, not just with our staff, but also with our students. With our staff, she's able to be there in tough times, able to provide words of comfort. Um, she's really able to connect all of us together.
I was shadowing her one day, just trying to get my feel, and I watched her write so strong on a kid's ass. And this kid had fallen down at recess, had a tiny bit of red on his knee, no blood, nothing, but she wanted him to know that, you know, his body was so capable of getting back up and getting him back to recess to keep breathing. And he saw that, and you could tell he felt like a Superman, that the nurse thinks, I'm strong, and ran back out the door, and, you know, she's like, yeah, sometimes you just need to let kids know they're tough. I don't need accolades, and he's very kind, but they, they come to me with, you know, issues that I don't know that all school nurses have or are presented with, per se, uh, because I think they know that I'm gonna, um, find isolation, help the child.
Oh, man. And so Kathy and I work very closely together. Uh, we have through lots of things that I wouldn't, lots of health things. Um, and she's been in the district, this is her fourteenth year. Before that, she spent thirty years in the hospital setting.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I'm old.
So she is an expert, and you can tell, uh, not only is an expert, just has so much love, uh, to give, to thank kindness to the folks. And so, speaking of, let's see, wave at us, we've got Howard staff here. If you're family, wave at us.
My husband, two of my three kids, Marisa lives in Dallas, and Nick and Bella are here.
So I know you know how wonderful, uh, your wife and mom are, and so we appreciate her so much. Congratulations.
Thanks.
That video is actually posted on our YouTube channel, so get out there and push it in all your little social media platforms that you have. Let everybody. Well, next, we have an update for our student council. Veer and Lizzie here, come on down and let us know what the high school's two codes doing.
Hi, everyone. My name is Veer Patel. I'm the, I'm the president of student council.
My name is Lindsay Lam. I'm the vice president. Uh, so this past Friday, we attended the Y T S summit, which I mentioned to y'all last month that I'm a part of this National Driving Board that advocates for safe driving. So we did go to that summit, and we learned a ton of different tools to bring safe driving back to our campus. It's a huge problem within teenagers, and Y T S, Youth Transportation Safety, is a really great program that engages teenagers, um, to advocate for safe driving, and we learned a lot of modes to bring it back to our campus. We're thinking of creating a little, uh, festival or maybe a fair during April sometime in the spring semester to bring more, um, objectives and more stuff to the high school campus. We're thinking of having, um, those like drunk goggles, those different ways to just advocate for safe driving in our campus.
And switching it to what we're doing currently, tomorrow, we're actually having our maintenance lunch in the student council cologne room, and we are serving all of our high school maintenance staff and just any staff with maintenance, I believe. And we, it's really fun. We get a bunch of volunteers to donate turkeys, different things, and then we also have our gift basket thing that we get a bunch of different organizations throughout the school to donate gift baskets for our less fortunate families at our school. And then after the break, the first Friday we are going to have is our holiday first Friday, where we will be having, uh, Mr. Dillard as Santa. We'll be having fake snow. We'll be having our fun games and music as usual, and then we'll also be selling hot cocoa.
Very good.
Well. I was gonna say, Veer and, uh, Lynn, you guys do an incredible job. Every month, you guys both show up together. I appreciate the way that you pour your hearts into sharing all the news that's going on and your hard work and leadership. You guys are awesome.
Yay.
That concludes our recognition portion of the evening. So if that's all you came for, this is a great time to leave, but you're welcome to stay. Thanks, everybody, for being here.
Hello. Congratulations. Okay, moving on. Do we have any, uh, requests? No, none. Great. Nobody wants to talk. Okay, let's move to item four, items for presentation or possible action. And we are going to get, what happened here?
They're showing them what they're gonna do.
Oh, see, already got, y'all already grabbed the computer. I liked it very fast.
All right, let's keep going.
All right, just want time, so it's up there.
Roll it.
All right. Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to come and talk about, um, creating opportunities for our students. It's probably one of my favorite times to come to the board and talk through the things, um, that are happening on our campus in regards to the classes that we offer, um, that you all had approved last year and kind of where we are in regards to that. Um, and then Ms. Alexander is actually joining me this year. Glad to have her back. Spin left. Style a little. And I'm gonna hope that I click the right way. So just to kind of talk through a little bit of the compliance pieces, when we're looking at different courses that we're offering. Somebody's moving it, and I'm like, what's happening? So talking through the different, um, secondary courses and the compliance pieces that we make sure we have in place, um, we always want to make sure that it meets Texas graduation requirements, um, that it follows any academic courses that are post-secondary. We want to make sure that we're preparing them for the world and what, as they walk away, and definitely want to make sure that it aligns with our profile of learner. The other pieces that are in place that are the annual, part of the annual process that we do is, um, that these new courses are in response to what students need and their interests as well. Um, we have to definitely make sure that they are aligned to the T E A Ts and that it has a P E A Ts number that goes along with any state codes that we have, making sure, again, in compliance. The other thing that we do when we're looking at our secondary courses is we look through our academic planning guides to see if there are any courses that we need to sunset. So when we say sunset, that means that we are looking at the courses that, um, students are no longer selecting, and so usually we take about three years, and then if they, most students have selected those courses, we go ahead and sunset them. They're always there, and if we need to bring them back, we can, um, but we just kind of take them off the course catalog because there hasn't been an interest, um, and then, um, we have them up to the side, knowing that if we need them, they're there. All righty, the process for new course proposals, it is a month, uh, multi-month, uh, process. In May, teachers submit new course applications for courses that they would want to offer in the school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. In June, the academic deans and teachers would then present the information to your site-based committee. When August rolls around, the deans present applications that have been vetted through site-based to the principal to determine if the budget committed and any personnel concerns. In September, the academic deans present the principal-approved course to the superintendent of curriculum and instruction. In November, the deans then present our new course proposals here to the board, and then hopefully again in November, we have new approved courses. So looking at the courses that the high school had from last year that you all approved, um, one of those was the Fundamentals of Visual Art, and, uh, which is a dual-credit course. And we are sitting at a hundred and one students that are taking that course and four sections of it. Um, the College Algebra Dual Credit Course, uh, the same, we have seventy-four students, and that's three sections. And so just kind of putting a little bit of, um, uh, understanding behind that. We talked about that it's kind of open enrollment for that course, so about two-thirds of our students are E C H S students, and then the rest are any student that was interested in taking the College Algebra. Um, and having great feedback from students about that course. So it's, it's neat to hear our kids talk about how much they enjoy it, how much they enjoy the teacher that's, um, we've put in place for that. Um, and then any regards to any sunsetting courses, um, we don't have any at this time. All right, so for this year, what we're looking at are actually, um, three dual-credit courses. So the first one is History thirteen oh one, thirteen oh two, um, it's U S History, um, one and two. And so it's two semester courses, six college cour-, six college hours, and it aligns with our U S History credit, and it does come with a one point one multiplier. So you'll see we have Semester One and then Semester Two that goes along with that. The second one, again, is a dual-credit, which is our Chemistry fourteen oh five and then fourteen oh seven. It's an introductory chemistry course, and again, it's, um, one and two. It does include the lab credit that goes along with it. Um, it is two semester courses, again, eight college hours, high school science equivalency with a one chemistry credit. So now with this course, it's actually more for non, um, chemistry majors, and so what you'll see is this, um, it's still a rigorous course, no matter, matter what. Um, but if you are going into pre-med and any of those, um, types of, um, um, courses when you go to college, it'll probably transfer more as an elective versus a science credit. Still looks great on the transcript because it is a college chemistry course. And then the last one is our Psychology, um, twenty-three oh one, twenty-three fifteen, and we're looking at Psychology A B. Again, two semester courses, six college credits, six college hours, and it will, um, come in as a Psychology elective, and it comes with a one point one multiplier. And again, you can see Semester One and Semester Two, the things that they'll be covering in those courses. And those are the three for this next year. All right, the junior school has one we are proposing this year. It would be Health One, and it would be a high school credit, half a credit. Um, it, uh, does have a P E A Ts code, it aligns with everything that we would be doing, they would still be doing at the high school. It is only for eighth graders, and that is something we want to be very specific in. Um, they will cover the same topics that they're gonna go over at the high school. It has already been vetted and gone through D E A C, the specific curriculum. Um, and this is kind of just a side note, when we get to the unit for, um, human sexuality, students, parents, families can opt out. It is not a mandatory requirement. They are able to opt out of that portion, then they can slide right back in the class. Because it's gonna be a semester course, we are able to align it with peer tutoring and Unified P E, which we don't even have enough room for how many kids want to be involved in those programs, so we think this is gonna pair really nicely, being an alternative to have that for a semester, and they could roll into Peer Tutoring, Unified, one of our other semester courses. So we're excited, excited about it. That's great. And those are the courses that we are offering or proposing this year. Questions?
Any questions?
No.
I got.
Very exciting.
So I know that we went in a deep dive about dual-credit versus A P, right? And we kind of landed on that A P, for the most part, was one of, one point one multipliers, and that dual-credits were one point oh eight. And I don't know how this.
One point one three. It is A P, one point one.
Oh, is that what happened? Okay.
That is what else.
I have no questions.
All right, then. Sounds great.
I, I'll clarify a question. So the chemistry course will really align with the chemistry course that's already there for the sophomores who are taking it. And then the U S, U S History is juniors or does that sophomores do?
Juniors.
They're juniors. Okay. Okay, that's great.
They all align.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And we're excited.
Speaking of the U S History, so do we currently, I should know, but I know we have grade level and then A push. Do we have, we don't have anything else, or no? So this would kind of slot in the middle, sort of, with that.
I mean, it's kind of a, I mean, it's a dual credit.
Dual credit, okay.
So it stands alone.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Perfect. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna move to. Oh, yeah, sorry. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the new course proposals for Alamo Heights High School and Alamo Heights Junior School?
I will approve.
Carrie, thank you. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? None. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, nay. The motion carries. Thank y'all. Thank y'all.
Appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving.
Great to see you both. I can see Charlotte.
All right, so section five, the next item on our agenda is consent agenda. These are items that the board considers routine or that have been previously reviewed and discussed prior, prior meetings, and that we therefore enact a motion. If there's anything in the consent agenda that the board would like to remove, to consider as an item on the regular agenda, anyone? I don't see anyone. So I also want to mention that we've received sixty-seven thousand dollars just in a month in donations, which is wild. I mean, it's like, it's always a big number every month, and, I mean, wow. All right, so if there's no items to pull out, do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Some move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Hunter. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, please say nay. Great, the motion carries. Moving on. We're gonna move on to section five H, Board Member Committee Reports. Our following items on the agenda is our committee reports. First off, is Goals and Principals Committee Meeting, G M P.
Those are.
Six.
Building Committee.
Building Committee.
All right, Building Committee. We'll just each give our report.
Yeah, uh, so we just, uh, approved it in consent, but we, we went over the fees tied to LPAPs tied to the D C C and Alamo Heights Junior School, um, and, and, and pretty good depth, and got a good understanding of that, excited about their engagement going forward on those two projects. And then we are holding on the design engagement for the Broadway effort until we get a little bit better understanding of what the pricing associated with that effort is, and kind of just better understand the scope of that effort because it's a little bit of a moving target. That's it.
Safety and Security Committee met.
Tuesday.
Was that this week or last week?
Last week.
Last week.
November eleventh.
And I will get that report. Um, the majority of the meeting was actually an executive session, but the one, um, agenda item that we discussed as a whole group in open session was. was just about reunification practice. And so our new coordinator of safety and security, Chief Ray, is going to lead a table topic, kind of simulation for administrators here coming in the spring, early spring, which is music to my ears. It is something that I've been a little bit apprehensive about, a little bit anxiety about just hearing other school districts and kind of how they walk through reunification. So I'm very excited that this is on the calendar. Our advent team is preparing for that, that exercise, and then I'm really proud of the work of our new, our new mayor. And he was actually, today, he spoke at the junior school at the PTO meeting and kind of shared, you know, his expertise. And so, again, just very grateful to have him aboard.
All right, awesome. Audit Committee met Wednesday, November 12.
Armstrong Vaughn and Associates, the CPA firm, presented our audit. It was a clean opinion. There were no material or significant findings. And if anyone would like to review the audit, I have it, it's only 81 pages. It beats Ambien. I'm kidding.
All right, glad we got that on tape. Next, our DIAC met on Wednesday, November 12. Who is representing us on that?
I will give an update. So several items discussed, menu planning advisory board, presentation to the committee on community-based accountability by Jimmy Walker, as well as the TIA presentation. Went over the school calendar draft for '26 and '27, and then the approval of the amendment to the DIPA that we just approved to consent.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, our last one, Alma Heights School Foundation met on November 19.
Today, so lots going on. Teacher fund is up to almost 250 people for Heroes for Heights, that's something they're giving. That's a huge number. We obviously have more parents than that in the community, significantly more, so we're still trying to get the word out, but that's $400,000 a year in annual recurring revenue. That's a big number. Greater Heights Night, for all you who worked on it, Karen worked on it too, they grossed to almost $1.1 million.
Sheesh.
$1,920,000. On a budget of just over 180 grand, so they netted just over $900,000. So that beat the previous record by seven and a half percent. It was just a great night all the way around. Mules Up Alone, you know, you do the whole paddle thing, that raised over $300,000. And in fact, it was so successful that they're trying to consider, do we kind of like, change or mix the live auction and do, just kind of juice the paddle a bit more? Because live auction is a lot of effort, there are some costs associated with it, and it raised nearly the same amount.
Although I love a live auction.
I've got sitting with Karen.
I didn't get anything this year.
Couple of other. They are doing Mules Up events in major metro areas in Texas, just to bring alumni together. We've never done that before. Dallas was the first one. Lynette and Trey Imber went up there, Si Gooch, a couple other folks. The Host family on the Host, one of the families on the Host Committee was Laura's cousin, Laura Page's cousin, which I don't know if you knew that. Maybe you knew that?
Was it, which one? What, Guy or your own spot?
Gal.
No, that would be.
No, I won't know.
Oh, well, don't turn off the.
That, it was an enormous success, and it had alums like from as far back as the 50s and 60s. There was a lot of connections, reconnections. It was very, very well-attended, nobody wanted to leave. It lasted well into the evening on Monday. The next morning, our representatives from our foundation met with Highland Park Foundation to talk about the state of public school finance in Texas and how we can join forces together more effectively in Austin going forward. So that's gonna be a continuing conversation, and also with Ian's ISD, which I think that's just wonderful. What was kind of neat was this one alum wrote an email to say thank you, and he's been in Highland Park for three decades, and he said, "I still long for Alma Heights. I wish I could live in Alma Heights." So there's just a lot of that natural connection. Or they noted, and I would emphasize, that the past endowment campaign, when they raised, I think, $5 million for the endowment or just over it, all of the money came from 7209, like, all of it came from right here. None of it came from Dallas, Austin, or Houston. And so there's an excitement about using these events to really generate interest in giving back to our community, because, last point, they're developing the themes for our endowment campaign that they're gonna run out next. So they're hoping to raise $10 million. They've done quite a bit in really laying the groundwork, but really the theory is, or the theme is Heights First, where it's like, if we can't support our own community and our own kids, then why are we supporting anybody or anything else? They've done a lot of work on developing those themes, developing who we're gonna, you know, target, go after, the asks we're gonna make. They learned a lot the last time around, which was basically like, we just got a list where we just mixed mass. Now it's a lot more targeted, it's like, if we're gonna sit down with somebody that we know what their assets are, we're gonna make an ask commensurate with those assets. You know, because a lot of people just kind of self-slug now to give the option. So a lot of excitement there, a lot of work that they're doing. It was neat just to be around the energy of it today. So that is School Foundation's end of.
David, great report.
Really good.
Yeah, that's awesome. No, man, I love your passion, it's good. All right, moving on, Section 7, Business Recommendations. There are no business recommendations.
Oh, wow.
So we're gonna go to 8, Calendar Review.
Julian's got the calendar projected there for us. Y'all, there is so much in December as far as fine arts, opportunities to come and be supportive of our community. So we're gonna send that out separately to y'all.
Okay.
You know, anything that you as a trustee can be part of and just be seen is always appreciated. We'll have our Building Committee on December 5th, our donor reception for the School Foundation on December 8th, the Argal GMP will take place on December 10th. Our School Foundation Board Meeting and the regular board meeting will take place on December 17. And then if you can call me in to Superintendent's Update.
Yes.
I will move on.
Section 9, Superintendent's Update.
And so Julian always puts together some great photos for us to review just of celebrations from the past month since we met. I'm incredibly proud of the way that we celebrate Veterans Day in this district. Every single one of our campuses does an incredible job bringing our community in and really highlighting our students, what it means to be a veteran. So you can see pictures of that all around. We had Move with the Military opportunity on Monday of that week at Cambridge. You can see pictures of our Grand Mules event. We had great attendance at that event, Grand Mules and senior mules that visited with us here in the boardroom. We talked about bond updates, we talked about budget updates, we talked about program updates, and then we got them on buses, and we took them to both the high school and then Woodridge. I feel like there's nothing better than welcoming our community into our classrooms so that they can see the incredible work that's taking place. And so every one of those events, Julian does an incredible job putting that together for us. But it's obviously a bright spot for me when we engage with our community that way. We had a great gratitude luncheon, appreciate those of you who were able to be part of that. What I love about that is it tells our auxiliary folks that they're incredibly important to us. Like, we can't barely operate the campus without you, but we're gonna make this happen this day so that you can come and have lunch together and have fellowship. And so I love that opportunity each year and appreciate your all's support of that. Go to the next slide, we're celebrating in a big way. Our band has achieved, you know, a high level of competition with the Area Competition Award this year. It's historical. I think any of you who've seen how the show has evolved over years just have seen the level of talent that our band promotes. And so exceptional accolades there. And then we also celebrate three of our teachers who were honored in the Valero Alumni Bowl Extra Yard for Teachers. Jalen Holan from Howard, she's our PE teacher. Kim Brady, who's a math teacher at the junior school. And then Dr. Cabero, who is our Spanish teacher. Each receives $500 for a classroom grant, and then they will be honored at the Alumni Bowl. They are pulled out at halftime and just made to feel extra special. And so big celebrations all around. And then if we go on to just some bond updates, so here's what's fun, is I had to present at my Superintendent's RAC meeting this morning, I presented about our Budget Advisory Council work from last spring. And so David stepped in for me to do this presentation at the foundation. So, you know, feel free to chime in if I forget anything about bond. Because you reviewed the notes just like I did, but a lot, Julian has a picture here, their crane is away. Collier texted me on Monday, and he said, "Dana, someone stole your crane." Yeah, I mean, I knew it was going down. And you can also see pictures of the Woodridge Portables that are being in place. And so after Thanksgiving, slowly, our classrooms will be moved into the portables so that we can start work on that fifth-grade hallway, making those classrooms, you know, a refreshed version, but also a larger-sized classroom for our largest students there at Woodridge. You can also see a picture of the golf simulator bay, and I'm hoping to kind of find, you know, a good time to have you guys over there when it's tied to kind of an event that we're having, so maybe it'll be at the next GMP. You can come use it anytime you want, but I'd like you guys.
It's a fundraiser, buddy.
There you go. And then you can also just see some of the structure that's being erected over there around the softball field. We have turf that's already in the batting cages and the bullpen. Obviously, this is gonna be an incredible opportunity for our students in the spring, and so it's great to see progress there. What did I forget?
Two things, the tennis courts, the resurfacing, and the shade things are finally getting redone. We're gonna have shade again.
So the shade is already going up, the wind screens are still in order, a little bit of a delay. But yes, so four courts have been resurfaced, four courts left to go.
And then, did you say baseball?
No, talk about baseball.
So the bathrooms done, bleachers come in this month. I think the shade structure is up.
I think so, thanks.
We're making lots of good progress on baseball.
Thanks for the backup. That's what I have, any questions?
And for those who didn't, so you may have noticed I stayed until the absolute end of the gratitude luncheon, because Collier makes the best chicken in the world.
Did you get a ticket?
Oh, 100%. See, I missed out on that. All right, so I think that's about it. I guess we're gonna take a little five-minute break before we move into Executive Section.
Now, I hope Collier knows how much these things come together.
He loves it.
I know that, so.